Public comment?
Come on, Gary.
Hi, guys.
Please report. Carl, you want to start?
I guess I can, but I don't have anything.
Okay.
Well, I, I've got a question. We went round and round and round a year ago about the airport and about Mr. Mills, and we let Mr. Mills come in. We now have a building up there that I understand, you tell me I'm wrong on this if I don't, but I understand it's sitting there and there has not been one tap turned up there since he rented it. Are we, is there a way that we can get him to let us utilize part of that if he's not going to be using it? And, and put some of our equipment in there, get in there and work on things when it's ice cold? Uh, that type of thing. Is that completely out of the question? And, and if he's not gonna, because, because I voted for that under the impression that he was going to bring some people over there, we're gonna start generating some traffic in and out of there, we're gonna start making some money there, and that money would turn over into county. So far, all we've done is spend money up there to get it in compliance for his operation, which is not a huge amount of money, but we have. And I don't even know if we've got our money back in rent yet for the, for the changes we've made.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Do you know off the top of your head how much money we spent up there to?
Well, what happened and done anyway, and nobody was there.
Well, we converted the, the heat over, we converted electricity over, we-
He paid for most of that.
He did? Didn't know that.
And we do have the shop, now the shop was on us, but that, uh, that has been electrified. We've still got a little bit more to do, we'll be able to pull, there'll be a heating shop or, I'm not sure where, I've got, I didn't make it to the last meeting, so I-
It was discussed about it.
Okay. So there'll be a place to work in there. I, I guess the simple answer to your question is we can talk to him. You know, I, Dale talks to him as, or to peg him and him as much as anybody. And there may be some way that we could mitigate, we'd have to mitigate his, uh, his-
Can you enlighten us on why he isn't doing what he says?
He's, he's still waiting for his final approval.
Okay, you're, for that process.
Right. Now, they have had people down in nicer weather, they did a lot more spraying this year than they've done in the years past. Uh, he has had that one guy out there quite a bit, not anymore, but quite a bit. They have moved in a lot of equipment, he's paid for having rewiring done so he can operate around-
So he's got stuff in that building now?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
Which, and that would be the only catch is if he has proprietary, uh, equipment in there, we'd have to, we'd have to work something out there. Because he doesn't, as he explains it, he doesn't want to have to worry about setting something like this down that's worth eight hundred dollars-
I don't either. And I, and I don't-
And we don't want to be responsible for it either.
Right, right.
Well, we can talk to him, there's no problem.
The other side about that is if he's renting it, why would we think we have any rights to be in there?
We don't. We don't have any rights.
We, we, we don't.
Okay.
But, let, let's, let's, this is a stretch, okay? But if we have taken federal money and part of that federal money, I mean, if I'm wrong here, guys, it's on the grant insurances, says we'll utilize that for a public, I, I'm, I'm saying that we, are we-
We've already crossed that bridge, that's not an issue anymore.
Actually, it says right in there, in the paranoid, we can rent out anything that's there.
We're not obligated at this point to, although it's not interpreted, we have asked Black, uh, Blacknick and others, and we're not in jeopardy of violating any agreements that we have with the feds.
Why are we doing the right thing, though? That's what, I, I mean, I'm not-
We've already voted and we've decided that issue has been decided.
And, and like I told you, part of the reason I voted on that was because I thought this is gonna bring some, some virtue to the county, and that building's sitting there empty, all that's doing is giving us a rent check, but it's really not, it's not encouraging traffic, it's not encouraging, uh, cash flow, anything.
Well, we're obligated by an agreement at this point. And as long as he doesn't violate that agreement and keeps up his part, then our, our avenues are, unless he's willing to do something, which we can talk to him, are, are tied up through that agreement.
Well, would it be prudent as managers here to ask him, just ask, if he sees a life at the end of the tunnel on, on this, on this, uh, track?
He does, but I'm reluctant to make a public comment about that and then have it fall through. I mean, yes, there, you know, he feels a certain time that will go through, but he also felt earlier this year that it was gonna go through, so. He has hired an individual or a firm to hasten this to get it-
And I understand through Dale and others that that guy's working pretty much full-time to get this thing going.
Right. So, I mean, if he's not sitting there going, well, when they get around to it-
Okay.
Just, we don't mind talking to him, okay?
I, I'm, I'm just throwing this out, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, I, I just want to do the right thing. Once again, I, I know we're not liable for signals that route one, but I want to do the right thing.
Well, if they wasn't there, would you be getting any money at all? I mean, somebody else renting and paying the same amount of money?
Uh, two things, I want to make sure we get money for it, but I, I want sure it's being utilized for airport stuff.
You'd like stuff to be going on, sure.
I like to see traffic coming in.
Right.
I like to see somebody have a tire changing business or something up there that-
We'll, uh, we'll talk to the advisory board and-
And, and, and selling fuel, we're not selling any fuel because there's no traffic.
Okay.
And that's something they talked about, by the way, anywhere up there, is make a, having a sale, and so they can get some of that older fuel out of there, maybe the board will get out that we've got, you know, cheap fuel up there and people start coming over and buying it.
We can also stabilize it, too.
Anything else? Dan?
Uh, the one that crackling building has been replaced. Bill should be at the courthouse finally. Uh, cop department roof has been fixed, bill for that was twenty dollars under thirty thousand, so didn't have to be put on bid. That was a little all the fishy side. It was twenty nine thousand.
Yeah, you're sure lucky.
Well, it got fixed and, and, uh, we're still looking for a replacement at health department for Dale English, so if anybody has any people interested, which probably is gonna be hard to find, hope you might give me a name.
They don't want to do it?
Well, basically, no.
Are they still thinking of the premise being if you guys wanted to throw two people in there? Okay, throw another person on there.
Well, they mentioned that Anderson, but there was somebody here that didn't want him in. Dale Anderson, I think was his name. Supposed to be before I got on, so I don't know. I, I tried basically told them that's your problem, so. Other than that, nothing else. Got a lot of dogs, anybody needs to adopt a dog. Pit bulls. I saw the paper, oh, there was eight of them, had pictures in the paper and something on pit bulls, so.
Maybe we need to have a pit bull shoot instead of a turkey shoot.
I was just gonna suggest that maybe we were gonna comment on it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Garry, honestly, I was not fast enough.
That was Mike.
Yeah, yeah.
Still an animal, or?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get ahead of Aaron.
He snuck in a little bit.
Yeah, he did.
Anything else? Andy?
I don't have much, I need to get together with you and my, I did, uh, Jeff Wood was in, and he talked to me and said there's a leak up at the jail. Are you aware of it to get it fixed?
I was told that's for the new administration.
That's what I was told, too, and I said, well, you know, he said Bob was gonna look at it.
Yeah, I don't know how much of a leak it is, I-
It was dripping over the kitchen sink.
Yeah, that's what he said. I don't know whether it's tightening a net on a toilet or I don't know what the deal is.
So you say Bob was gonna look at it?
He told me he was gonna have Bob look at it, and I said, anyway, I said, I'm good with you guys, he needs to probably go and look at it or something.
No, we need to just have Bob take a look at it and tell him that if he can't fix it, get somebody to-
Get somebody to fix it, that's kind of what I told him, I said, get a hold of somebody.
Yeah. We'll get that taken.
I have another quick, go ahead.
You, you guys are gonna have to go around and look at all the buildings, aren't you, as soon as you get up?
As soon as everybody gets a chance to do it.
Uh, this liquor license thing, do we have to exclude Andy from any, uh, conversation about it? Or do we just have to exclude Andy from voting, or do we exclude Andy at all from voting on it?
I'm not, I'm just gonna stay.
Okay. What?
No, I don't care.
I'm, I'm just pointing that out, I didn't, I didn't realize it was coming up until I saw it on there.
I don't, I don't know that we have a lot of discussion on it. So.
Okay. Maybe somebody, maybe somebody on this board's against it.
Yes.
You know, I, I'm, I'm thinking, you know-
And they, they can vote for it.
When we vote on it, that's certainly an opportunity to let that, you being up.
Well, I, I thought it would probably be a good idea if before that, we had a discussion before it just got thrown on the members of the, that's the, uh-
We'll go over that, I guess, when we get through these, if there's any questions on there. How's that, is any question on the agenda?
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. You know, I'm probably the new senior president of the Timperd's League here in County, and I just want Andy to know this.
Do you have anything else? Jeff?
Yes, I've got several things, the airport cameras are in, they need to be fine tuned, but that'll happen.
Who put those in?
Ross and one of his associates, okay? By the way, whenever, if any of you want to talk to Ross, he has a priority sheet that he maintains, and of course, that's a fluid sheet where there's things that need to be done in an emergency, so at any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to call Ross. Depending on, you know, whatever direction you're coming from, and he'll be able to, to tell you or even email or ship you a copy of it so you know what he's going to do.
Do you know if we can go on the internet and look at that, uh, airport cameras, or is that-
I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'll find out, okay? He may, it may be something that is possible, usually anything that you ask is possible anymore, now whether it's-
I guess it isn't.
I don't know if it's closed, closed loop or if it was.
So, at any rate, but it is a digital system and it does record, and so we're, we're off to the races there. Uh, the next item is that the assessor's, uh, job, as you well know, is open in a week from today. I'll get with Augie after our organizational meeting, I've talked to both ladies. We have two qualified candidates now, uh, they've both passed their exam.
Wanda.
Wanda has passed, she emailed me on, uh, Saturday to let me know, finally, you know? So she was pretty excited, and I saw both of the ladies this morning, so I was technically not with you, but I was at work, okay?
David's not on there, Da- David didn't?
No. As far as I know, I, I never heard any of these gun and blood about him being interested or any way, shape, or form, but we do have two candidates, and the upshot is that the, the committee, everybody's welcome, but the committee will, uh, set up some times, and next Monday, we'll interview them with the eye to have a recommendation for the board.
And they're both employees now?
They're both employees now, okay? Is there any question in regard to that?
Yes, has that all been put out for, like, uh?
Augie?
What are you looking at me for?
Well, you put it out there for, I mean, we advertised it.
Yeah, we advertised it.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and in the advertisement, it said that the resume and the application were due back in the clerk's office on, uh, what, October twentieth?
Twentieth.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see, so that's number dish.
Yes, please. I just thought something of this, um, from our covering of ourselves, they have like a little sheet of paper or something that says, boom, we passed the test from, um, state of Illinois or something, so.
Augie would have that.
I get those from the Department of Revenue.
So they actually will physically-
I have one certified letter or cert-
So that's how it comes, that's what I mean, so we have a real idea of it?
I don't have the second one yet, but I'm sure it's forthcoming.
Okay.
Yep.
So it actually, we're getting it from somebody for real?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Talking about the assessor, did you talk to Dina this morning about the airport farm ground? Did she say anything to you about that?
No, no.
I've spoken to her.
About getting it exempted?
Oh, no, not, I'm sorry, they were looking for the updated leases.
Okay, yeah, we've gotta have the, the airport, go ahead.
Right, and, but she called and said that she was doing some tax stuff on, you know, 'cause all the ground that's leased, you know, we have to pay taxes on it. And she was, there's like, it shows a hundred ninety acres leased, but she's not finding that many acres when she's looking at them, I have to say.
I need to get her and Wanda together, Wanda's got a document that was help-prepared over here that shows actually what, what we'll update. There's kind of two phases to it, Carl, number one, we've been paying on taxes, too many taxes in the last two years because of the crosswind, the crosswind run. So that can go back and we can get credit for that. And then in addition, we have layered on top is the, uh, the new buffer zones. And so, one and then two. And, and Wanda has that all ready to go, and I don't know why the two of them haven't talked, but I will-
She called me into last week, and I told her I'd talk with you today, and, because I didn't know exactly that part of it.
Right, Wanda had it ready for us to sign, to go, and I don't-
Well, Dina's, I guess it's the end of the year, and she's trying to clean up a few of the-
I'll stop back through on the way to Connecticut, okay? I'll see you after two words also. Uh, as to the budget, no, one more thing, uh, the fifty thousand dollars that's on the agenda uh, for payment of, of, uh, ahead on our obligations to IMRF. Don and I have studied cash flow, and we feel that we can authorize him to pay down fifty thousand dollars towards our IMRF long-term obligation, and thereby saving ourselves about seventy, seven point five percent interest is what the state charges. So we can do that, not cause any problems to our, um, cash flow. Uh, and if you'll noticed, this year, we were paying eighty-one hundred dollars a month, which, you know, we had been good the last few years because we've been paying ahead, but I guess some agencies haven't. So, but they set all agencies up on a program where they pay ahead, so they pay so much a month, and ours went from, uh, eighty-one hundred down to sixty-three hundred because of the efforts that we've made, and we're saving money for the taxpayers in interest, and so we're recommending, and I'm sure Don will tell you at the meeting, recommend you that we go ahead with that.
What's ours principle on that?
I, I can't tell you right offhand, it was, uh, it was over half a million dollars at one point, so. But we've paid quite a bit over the last few years, okay? Finally, on the budget, uh, at current time, we're still waiting for state income, well, first of all, all bills that I'm aware of have been paid from now till, till Sunday. So everything is paid, at this point, we are seventy-six thousand eighty dollars to the good. However, income is not all in, we're still waiting for the state income tax check, personal property check, and the Clark County Public Defender. If we should get all or part of those in, it'd put us at about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand bucks. So that's how we're in the black.
Or about the hundred and seven thousand from rides.
That, that's included, okay? That's all I have at this point.
Is the pay, the payrolls.
Payrolls in there.
I have a couple more things on health department, uh, Jerika got released, I remember Jerika. She didn't pass her test, and we gave her a period of time, and then she got insubordinate with the director, so she got released last week. Also, heating and cooling systems got to replace probably next year. And we were talking about probably need to put it out on bid, but we need specs first, and they mentioned you may know somebody could do that for us.
Make up specs?
Yeah, make up specs to replace it. It's gonna be a major expense for us, so do you think somebody will let me know?
Now, when you say major, like a hundred thousand, twenty thousand?
The way I did is everything, furnace and heating and cooling both, yes, never been-
I would guess less than a hundred thousand, I would guess. Fifty thousand.
Is that the yardage of the grounds expense?
No, that was a health department expense. That's how it's been done. For two, one main reason is they have the money. And we don't.
Wonder. I guess we've already done a lot of fixing, but maybe we should have talked about this before we spent any money, why we couldn't move the health department out to the crackling building.
I'm not even sure it's big enough for what's going on.
I'm just wondering here, I mean, if that building, if we're gonna have to spend a whole lot more money on it.
People realize just how much they do.
Yes, they have all, they would use half that building just for their dentist area.
Yeah, it's set up for that.
Okay, I just asked.
Yeah, they'd use over half the building just for their dentist, along with the, the wick.
Dental every month is, you wouldn't believe, I mean, people, they don't work that much.
So would they be talking about a total HVAC system then?
That's what they're talking about, yeah.
And then, so is that like replacing all that stuff?
They would say over a period of time, because the one they have is not energy efficient, you know that? It's been there since the building built.
We need to get wood still, yeah.
That's original one?
The boiler is original. The air conditioning is.
Going more, Carl says, that they definitely hurt taking, or that would they be taking much of stuff out for the end, because that's technically still our, our building, right? So we just have to approve that until they have, right? In that overall?
I mean, I don't think, I think they do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But I mean, it's our, technical, our building.
I found that out after, after they was trying to-
And so, answer Carl's question, it comes out of building and ground.
Nobody else knew that.
Well, assessor's office didn't know that either. That's what I wondered, I think, I think the building and ground would have to know what's going on when they're in conjunction with these guys, because they're doing something to our building.
They're paying for it.
Right. That's, is that right, they're doing something to our building, but they're paying for it?
Yes, just like putting on the roof and, and everything they've ever done there, they-
They have the budget, they have-
They're not very familiar with it, I would say.
Well, good. Well, it can be, it can be expensive, though.
It's gotta be downwind.
You down?
Yeah. Oh, just to, to the fact that we're gonna have a, uh, a committee meeting between the insurance committee and the finance committee to clarify a few things, talk about some chances.
Probably won't have a ten, we'll be all late. Alan?
Yeah, the, other than the fact, the same thing I've been saying for like the last month or so, the thing's gonna probably be tomorrow, workers' compensation insurance, is that still on for tomorrow, Augie, do you know?
As far as I know.
Okay.
What time?
At two o'clock. And then, again, stuff in December one, January one, all through, but same, same kind of stuff we talked about before, and as Jeff said, we're gonna have a insurance and finance total together meeting here coming up. Minus one second, another minute.
What is it? County clerk?
Carl.
Probably Carl, oh, yeah.
Um, I see that Shaughnessy's back on the agenda. So you wanna address that issue with conflict of interest?
Yes, the state attorney discussed with Shaughnessy, uh, Troye, chairman of the, and Nanette, right?
Yes.
And after all of them discussed it, they seen no conflict of interest. Is that correct?
That's correct, and a little bit more, because nine-one-one does not pay any monies to the ambulance service. I mean, that's just part of it, but Mark didn't, he sees no conflict of interest.
And if I read that summation correctly, is that, that will be like a, a working type of arrangement also? I mean, because who knows what the state may come down the line and throw something different on nine-one-one or not, or however it is, so that they'll continue to, to look at it, but as it stands now?
Well, they could see the in and out of PICA and nine-one-one, because that's all their services based on nine-one-one.
The fire achieve to, you know, you know.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, Carl, also, anything else anybody sees on the agenda that they want to discuss? That is what this meeting's for. Well, I could tell you that we put all the levies are separate.
Yes.
Which they should have been before, but, um, that way, Roden Bridge guy can make the motion for, which says if he approves what they've got there, or, or one of these, has somebody that's responsible, Board of Health, and they have that option to make the motion on them levies, and any comment they would like to make. Any questions on the agenda? Anything else from anybody?
I got something in the, uh, I guess it was hand-delivered to me while I was gone for a few days celebrating the marriage of my eldest son, and, uh, so I, it, it came from Paul Ruff, and it's regarding the enterprise zone and also an abatement for NAL. And, so I got back in the office Tuesday, and Paul and I have played phone tag, and I took a quick glance at the documents, but, um, I think one of the girls said something about that Paul wanted this on the agenda for the meeting, and I basically said, well, if you happen to talk to Paul, it's too late for that, plus the board has not had an opportunity to review the said documents. So, I brought those out, and anybody, Ben, if I give them to you, then you can hand them off to whoever they need to be, to go to, or to Mark. One, uh, the, the enterprise zone document appears to be how they're gonna pay for the enterprise zone administrator's salary. And then the other document, which is much more lengthy and, uh, detailed, is regarding abatements for NAL for their new expansion.
How are they going to pay the salary?
I, I didn't read, I didn't read all the details. But I brought it out, so, would you like for me to hand it to you, or take it to Mark and ask him to look it over, and then we can talk about it?
Both.
Both, and then see what-
I would like to see it too, also, besides for Mark, but, yeah, Mark does need to look at it.
How about if I go out and make copies for everybody?
Yes, that sounds like-
Uh, now or today? Mail them out to you, email them out to you, is that okay?
It's Wednesday, well, you could give Carl his and email ours. I, I'm not making fun, that way you have it very good.
I'll get you all copies, I'll get you all copies.
Electronically is good enough for me.
Yep, okay, uh, can I have?
Might be the responsibility of a director of enterprise.
I guess we're gonna, that's why we need to know, I mean, we can't put it on the agenda for Wednesday.
Right.
For the administrator, yeah.
Administrator.
Ruff is the administrator.
Somebody separates, my point was saying.
I was more, I was more, I didn't have any part of it.
I didn't know we were obligated to that. Do you know anything about that, Mr. Zuber?
Nope.
Because I thought twenty-five hundred bucks was the extent of our-
I asked that question, didn't I?
And I think, my understanding of that skill is, I thought at that meeting when they talked about though, they have to have somebody who is written down.
And then our obligation may not be twenty-five hundred.
Well, I'd say that's-
No, but we may just have to approve the administrator since we're part of it, and it may be all read.
Well, that's why we need to see it.
Exactly. I don't think we said anything more, we really had to put that forward in a formal motion, but even twenty-five hundred. Let's say that they can do that later, that's the thing, right?
Anything else?
I think that's good for me. Unless anybody has questions for me.
Is this, what have we set up, we have a presentation today or?
Insurance committee, what I, what I wanted to do is just, uh, from our September seventeenth board meeting, that we were upstairs in the courtroom, there was a lot of talk about insurance and opt-out, and it's only sixteen minutes is all the longer that meeting lasted. And I thought it might be good as a refresher to just play that video if you all, if you decide so, but that's what that's for. Now, this is gonna be, this is gonna be after Rita makes her presentation, but it's more-
I would entertain a motion to clarification.
Study session.
To adjourn?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm on that motion.
It's second?
Second, yep.
Our motion is second to adjourn the study session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. We're out. We'll take a minute. We'll take a minute break.